2024 Study Meeting, the Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Vice President, Martha Tashnik?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President. Good evening. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,996th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, July 1st, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I will note that we are showing six and we're missing Councilwoman Toy. I'm going to jump right into audience communication. We've set aside 30 minutes for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to have your three minutes, please make your way to the podium. Mr. King.
Okay. Please bear with me. I wrote this about 15 years ago.
Uh-uh. Listen, you can tell us when you want that clock to start.
Yeah, but... So I was at the groundbreaking. They said everything starts with a vision. I wanted to throw out pie in the sky vision that I had 15 years ago. Friends and neighbors are gathering in Livonia Town Center Square nestled on the southeast corner of Five Mile and Farmington for a concert event on the solar-powered GE Outdoor Stage, celebrating the 50th year of live performing for Steve King and the Diddly's. Many of the concert goers will be coming from the new restaurants and merchant shops that ring the town center. Others will have hitched a ride on the electric and hydrogen fuel buses that are such a common sight around the designated greenest city in Wayne County. Still, others have walked from the reduced footprint elevator parking structure that now stands where the school administration building once stood. Some have chosen to simply to ride their bicycles utilizing the citywide bike trail system that began with the first trail along Hubbard Road between Five and Six Mile. The many artisans that are in attendance for the concert have walked from the lofts where they live above their shops on the east side of Town Center Square. It is this corridor of the square that was built expressly for the many talented artists in the regions and has been growing steadily as more craftsmen migrate to the city because of its thriving art culture. Their present has been an economic boon for the city. In fact, the recent annual Town Center Art Show just experienced record attendance, bringing more than 50,000 attendees to the square over the weekend. Merchants and artists alike are happy and proud to be a part of Livonia's revitalization that has resulted from the creation of this central gathering place several years ago. In the center of the square, scores of soccer players are relaxing with their families in town from all over the state. They are between games, playing in the annual Livonia Tournament, being held at the indoor soccer fields at the sportsplex at Seven Mile and Middle Belt. They have come for refreshments and the athletes are relaxing on the edge of the fountain that forms the square's focal point. As usual, many seasoned citizens are in the audience for they comprise the majority of the fan base. These folks are representatives of Livonia's senior community at large, which is thrilled with their new home at the very expanse of refurbished Dickinson Senior Center on Newburg Road. Now they start their day walking the mall across the street before heading over to the center for lunch. Some of the food items they'll be eating are harvested from onsite greenhouses that is managed for profit by the garden clubs and local foodies that lease plots year-round. The seniors, even larger in number now, living in the city overwhelmingly improved in the land swap that helped make Town Center Square spring to life. And new life is exactly what Town Center Square has brought to a once stagnant Livonia that was caught resting on its laurels. Because of the changes brought about by the focus on community, the Town Center planners were careful to cultivate, new young families have moved to the city in record numbers, so many in fact. The new Bill Gates Science and Technology School, built at the former Bryant School site on Six Mile Road, has a long waiting list to attend. It is just one of the new LEED-certified buildings that are cited throughout the city. It actually sells power back to the grid, along with tens of thousands of homes covered with thin solar panels manufactured right here in Livonia at the old GM plant on Schoolcraft Road. The installation servicing of the panels on residential rooftops.
But you know what? I was trying. I was stretching it.
I've tried to talk.
So here's the thing. When that happens and the ribbon cutting is there, I want you to do story time with that same story.
Yeah.
And you can read it slower with all the kids around Town Center. That's what a... And then the concert by Steve King and the Diddly's after.
See it spree.
I love it. Thank you, Mr. King. I just wanted to just take a timeout. That's great. Any other audience communication? Seeing none. We are gonna... Actually, let me jump back to council. Council, do we have any communications from council? Seeing none? Or, Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So there is a really cool thing that's going to happen in the next, like, 25 minutes. One of Livonia's own, Mackenzie Soroki, a Livonia Stevenson grad, is swimming tonight in the U.S. Olympic Trials final for the 100 breaststroke. She is somebody we are all very proud of. There's a big contingent of friends and family from Livonia, a lot from Stevenson, a lot from the Burton Hollow Swim Club, that are in Indianapolis to support her. And there's a bunch of watch slash viewing parties going on throughout Livonia and elsewhere as well. So I don't suspect she's watching the city council meeting right now, but I would like to extend our best wishes and just indicate how proud we are of Mackenzie as a shining example of what the type of person comes from Livonia. She's a great swimmer, but I can attest to she is extremely good with young children and she's taken a lot of time to mentor a lot of kids over the years as well. So good luck, Mackenzie. We are all rooting for you. And hopefully, Mr. McCullough can run this meeting quick enough so we can get out to see you.
Let's get the party started. Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Anything further from council? We're going to move right into number one, and this is new business. It's a block party. Comes to us from Daniel Munoz, to be held Saturday, July 13th, 2024, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Auburndale Street between Jamison and Berkeley Avenues, with a rain date of Saturday, July 20th. Is Daniel here today? Counsel?
Mr. McCullough, I will offer that for the regular agenda as an approving, so we can hear from the petitioner.
Thank you. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number two, which is a block party request. This comes to us from Tracy Nolte, to be held on Saturday, August 3rd, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. on Marie Street and Court, between Nelson and Mitten Avenue, with a rain date on Saturday, August 10th, 2024. Hey, Tracy, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Tell us a little about what you got going on.
Well, this is an annual thing for us, with the exception of COVID year. We've, gosh, 10, 11 years now we've done this, and we just have a great time. We open up the, you know, a couple people's houses for driveway support for food and games and lawn, you know, all kinds of lawn games and stuff like that.
Sounds good. Well, we'll keep the tradition going. Counsel?
I'll offer an approving for consent.
We've an approving for consent. Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything further from the audience? You can hang out with us at the next meeting, but your matter is all but assured to be approved. So enjoy, and we'll see you next year.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is an appointment of Daniel West to Livonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This comes to us from the office of the mayor to fill an unexpired term of Jack In Your Breathen, which is expired, which will expire on November 24th, 2026. Do we have representative? Well, we got Mr. West. Hello, Mr. West. How are you?
Council President McCullough, members of council, good evening. Congratulations on your event today.
Thank you. I'll open up the council. Council, do we have any motions or direction?
Mr. McCullough, I'll offer an approving for consent to have Mr. West fill the vacancy left by the mayor. It's fitting that Mr. West, in his capacity as chamber president, would fill this role as this is an important part of the city's commercial landscape. So Dan has proven himself worthy over many years of service to our community. So I think he'll do well in this capacity as well. Thank you.
That's another hat. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Mr. West, it's good to see you. Moving on to item number four, which is a site plan petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2024-04-08-01 submitted by Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark on behalf of the City of Livonia, requesting approval of all plans in connection with a proposal to construct a new Livonia Senior Wellness Center and make renovations to the Kurski Recreation Center. Mr. Terminas?
Very briefly, this is, as everyone knows, first major expansion and renovation of the recreation center since it was built in the early 2000s, when the city acquired roughly 17 acres of property from Livonia Public Schools. We are buying an additional four and a half acres, as everyone knows. This aerial photograph shows the total land area, including the additional 4.15 acres. The building's going to have two additions. One is going to be on the east side, that is, the senior center addition. It totals, the floor area is about 10,600 square feet, but when you add the former gymnastics space that's within the recreation center and add a second level to that space, altogether, it's going to bring the new Senior Wellness Center to about 31,000 square feet. The fitness area that is currently in the former gymnastics space is going to be moved to the main gym, and the new gym is going to be constructed on the west side of the building. That's shown in green. So as you look at this plan, what's shown on the right is the senior wellness addition, and what's shown on the left-hand side or the west side adjacent to Hubbard Road is the gymnasium. That's about 8,900 square feet. You'll also notice on this plan, a separate entrance will come in off Five Mile Road, providing access to the front of the building, where there'll be a portico share, parking separate from everything else, about 120 spaces. This is what you'll see from Five Mile Road. So it's reminiscent of what's there today in terms of the brick pattern. You'll see the glass curtain wall, as well as the entry feature, the canopy, which mimics to some extent what we have on the south side of the building, the main recreation entrance. Planning Commission is recommending approval. The only stipulation is with respect to landscaping, any changes would have to come back through the Planning Department for review for landscaping.
Thank you, Mr. Terminas. I just want to just touch base. I know a lot has... This took a village to put this together. Mr. Davis, you and your team, Councilman Donavick, and I know Councilwoman Toy were a part of the kind of the steering committee from the owner's standpoint. And the rollout, I know I brought it up the last meeting on the rollout and the transparency, but again, kudos and thank you to your team. I mean, it was above and beyond. I mean, we had things everywhere. There was QR codes. And just to get the information out, you know, to the public, you know, it's imperative, especially to make a project be so smooth. And you guys knocked it out of the park. Councilman Donavick, and I'm going to hand it over to him briefly, but again, Councilman Donavick, your efforts do not go unnoticed. You put a lot of time and effort into this, and I expect you to be, in 30 years, the paddle, was it the paddleball champion of the world and the silver sneaker man? But no, you did a... Kudos to you for putting in the time and effort, and I'll hand it over to you right now.
Thanks, Mr. President. It's been a really interesting experience watching our department heads and the various individuals in our city going through this process. I mean, really great input to watch this thing from inception with my colleague Laura Toy and my colleagues on council. The administration has really done a fabulous job here, and the department heads have done a really nice job in formulating this plan. At the very beginning, there were multiple renditions of this, and all of a sudden, we've come down to this grade A plan, I think. And I think this is the good plan for our future and for the residents. When I'm a senior one day, when Mr. Davis is a senior in a couple days, so it's nice to see this getting here to the finish line. A couple questions, Mr. Davis. I know we talked a lot, the residents of the senior center. Can you emphasize the importance of having that Five Mile entrance and why we thought it was so, why the city has thought it's so important to have its own entranceway and kind of own identity?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman Donavick. And I was going to ask you to speak up a little louder since I'm so advanced in age, but I did manage to hear that. As Councilman Donavick stated, when we started this process, we really started with four different, completely different, unique looks at this project. And that really helped us identify certain things that made a great deal of sense, and that Five Mile entrance was one of them. I think in our early plans, we were automatically looking at it as an entrance on Hubbard, just a continuation of the rec center entrance. It would wrap around and somehow create a separate parking lot, somehow. Very vague. And then we saw this on one iteration, one of the four, this entry off Five Mile, this completely separate lot, that there is a connection point there, but we'll bollered it off. So we'll have options on when we want it open for multiple uses. That really made so much sense. It felt like a completely separate facility, even though you're gaining all of the uses of the rec center with the senior center. You're not recreating a pool. You're not recreating a fitness center. You're not recreating a walking track. You're tying into all those existing amenities, but you're giving the seniors exactly what they asked for, which is a separate facility. It's going to have a completely separate feel to it. That separate entryway off Five Mile, I think, is one of the things. Again, when I think back to going through this project, we all saw that in one iteration, and we said, that makes so much sense. We need to keep that. And that's what you see now. And there's a lot of those instances, but that is a striking one, again, that separate entry point, separate parking lot off Five Mile will give this building a unique feel.
And, Mr. President, if I may, I know that this is for the site plan specifically. However, I do think that the phasing of this really is going to determine the success of the site plan. So can you explain the phased approach and how we're going to demo a building, build a new portion of a building, build another building, while trying to keep the best city services possible?
Yeah. I think that's a great question. I think, you know, a lot of time and energy and even went into that, and even our choice in construction managers was PCI Daily, because PCI Daily showed us they had the most experience in dealing with a phased approach to a project and keeping a facility open during a construction project. And that really, I think, stood out to the group as we were evaluating construction managers. So the initial phase is going to start here, pending council approval on site plan tonight, and we have an upcoming COW on the 24th, and then hopefully, a regular meeting where guaranteed maximum price would be approved. But pending those hurdles, we would anticipate construction, earth movement, begin on foundations for the east addition for the senior center and the west addition for the gym, that second week of July. And really, everything's going to remain untouched. Everything is outside. There's no changes to the rec center participants at all, which is nice. And then you begin in September, where we will then lose the gymnastics portion of the rec center, the former gymnastics space. And they'll begin working on that, adding that second level, and doing all the renovations in there. We'll then move equipment out of that space. We'll put it in MAC, our MAC Gym 1. And then we'll also infill around the building. If people remember that have been longtime members of the rec center, we used to have a great deal more equipment up on the second floor. I used to joke, the fit hub, you would hop on a treadmill and meet your new best friend right next to you because you were that close. I don't want to necessarily get that close again, but we'll squeeze things in a little more. So it's something that we feel confident we'll be able to move the equipment around and adequately space everything out. So that's how, starting in September, that's how it will be until we hit July of '25. In July of '25, we would open up the new west gym for the rec center, and then we would then close down main gyms one and two during that time. So again, we're shifting things out. We're losing two gyms. We're adding on the west gym. We'll still have the functionality of MAC, of one court, so that's going to be the biggest squeezes once we hit July of '25. We anticipate before the end of the summer, the senior center project being completed, and there'd be a ribbon cutting there. We'd still be under renovation at the rec center until approximately December of 2025. So again, the whole mindset regarding this was keeping as much functionality of the building, inconveniencing our members and our users as much as poss, minimizing the inconvenience as much as possible. And I think that's what PCI has done a good job putting together a plan for, so.
My last question is the retention ponds along the northern portion of this. Are these ponds going to be holding water? I know, or they're not holding water? I know there's been conversation with some colleagues and council, retention ponds and the cleanliness of them and what they look like. Do you know what these will? I know you're not the engineer, but...
Yeah, I'm definitely not, thank goodness. But I believe these won't hold water as much as they'll slow water down and release it slowly into the storm water management system and storm sewers.
Yeah, I just know there's been conversations with some colleagues about sometimes these retention areas, whether they hold water or don't, they start to look bad. And with this being such a large focal point of the town square and Bentley Field next door and what have you, I just, I wonder what that's going to look like five, 10, 20 years down the road. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further, council? I don't know if we have a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving for the regular.
There you go. We've an approving for the regular. Anything further from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close this item, but again, kudos. Let's get this party started.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving on to item number five, which is a request for the authorization to amend the memorandum of understanding between the City of Livonia and Wayne County Department of Public Health. This is coming to us from the Department of Emergency Management in order to continue a close point of dispensing. Hey.
Hello.
Good evening again.
Yes. President McCullough, honorable members of council, good evening again. Coming before you to request your authorization to re-enter into the agreement with Wayne County Public Health, become a close point of dispensing between the City of Livonia and Wayne County Health. Close point of dispensing would allow us to receive prophylaxis from the strategic national stockpile should we have some type of large-scale epidemic or biological attack, which would allow us to get the medications needed for city workers and their families so we could maintain continuity of government to get through that incident itself. This would go hand-in-hand with what are called open points of dispensing, which are located strategically throughout the City of Livonia.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to... This is a pretty standard thing. I think we've been doing it for many years now, and I'd just like to offer an approving on the regular.
You want it on the regular or consent?
You know what? Make it on the consent. I'm sorry.
Any issues with that, council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. You have an approving on consent, Mr. Con?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, which is a board of contract. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the Merriman Road Water Main Improvement Project from budgeted funds. Mr. Zalinsik?
Thank you, Council President. City Council members, this one's a long time coming. We've been working on this for a couple of years with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark. As you know, we've had numerous water main breaks on Merriman Road between Plymouth and the CSX Bridge. Unfortunately, Wayne County's allowed a lot of telecommunications along the west side in the Greenbelt area. Therefore, we had to have HRC provide a feasibility study in the best place to place a new water main that's had numerous breaks. Unfortunately, we have to go into the roadway on the southbound lane, curb lane, to put approximately 2,000 lineal feet of new 12-inch water main. As you're all aware, we've been doing a lot of replacements. HRC was instrumental in the Five Mile Road Water Main Project from Inkster down to Merriman. They've helped us out on other projects, even obviously with the Wellness Center and other projects in the City of Livonia. So looking for their expertise, we took the bid package out, and we had five bidders. HMCLC in Sterling Heights was the lowest bidder at $1,616,966.50 with 90 crew days. We have Jack Nagel, the project manager from HRC, in the audience. We also have Joe Tissio from HMCLC, as they are a new contractor. We have not worked before. But with HRC's review of their previous work, along with my information, vetting out them talking to other consultants, we are confident that they can start this project early to mid-July, if approved, in the next couple we, month, for us to complete this project on time and under budget. As you can see, again, there's a difference between the first and second low bidder, but they are ready to go, move forward if approved. And again, I'd be happy to bring up the contractor, Joe Tissio and/or Jack Nagel, if you have any further specific questions about this project. But we are looking forward to take the money, which will be out of the water sewer account, 592, not the bond funds. There's money been set aside for the last couple of years to handle the construction, which you'll see in the next item, along with the CE, I mean, along with the construction for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Zalinsik, will the residents experience any sort of delays in water? Is there temporary water out there? How does that work?
So unfortunately, there's probably about three or four different residents on the west side, but as you can see, Consumers has taken over the north side of Plymouth Road between Middle Belt and Merriman. They actually are down at Merriman Road right now as we speak. We hope they will vacate the area in time for our project as we continue on mid-July. But we did hear rumors that they're looking at closing Merriman Road, northbound lane from Plymouth to Industrial next week on the 24th to early July. So again, as soon as they get their stuff out of the area, get their work done, then we can come in, do our 12-inch water main improvements, and tie into a 36-inch water main at the intersection at Plymouth. So if anything that came good out of this project is, we're both down at the intersection, disturbance at once, and then we can put Humpty Dumpty back together at the corners there, at the decorative corners. So, but yes, that's the, you know, ability to have some impacts to the businesses, but the key thing is, you know, removing the pavement, getting the water main in place, still making sure that they're hooked up, and then obviously replacing the road.
Anything further from council? I don't think we have a motion yet.
I'll move to approve that for the consent agenda.
We've an approving for the consent. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? All right, we have an approving on consent. We'll move on to item number seven, which is a request to amend the contract with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark Incorporated for the Construction Engineering and Administration Services for the Merriman Road Water Main Project, replacement project, and putting Humpty Dumpty back together on Plymouth Road. This comes to us from the Engineering Department. Mr. Zalinsik?
Mr. McCullough, I think there's nothing new in regards to this. I think you just explained it. Is that correct?
This is just the design.
It just allows us to utilize the design services. I'll offer an approving for consent for this as well.
We've an approving from consent. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience? Moving on to item number eight, which is a request to renew lease agreement between the City of Livonia and Livonia Save Our Youth Task Force. This comes to us from the Department of Law for a period of three years, beginning August 1st, 2024. Karen, I'd like to see this at least 20 years.
Thank you. I would as well.
She may be the only one in this building.
Yeah, it could be.
Will this building be here in 20 years? I wonder.
I'm hoping not.
I thought this was our fourth three-year term, but I believe it might be our fifth.
Yeah, we'll just keep them going.
There are no words to describe how fortunate we feel to have the opportunity to have space in this building and to interact with staff and visitors in the building and be treated like family, kind of the neighbor next door that is called aunt. So I appreciate this from the bottom of my heart. And since we've been here, our grant has increased over 60% from Detroit-Wayne Integrated Health Network. Also, we have everyday relationship with every sector of the community, and we are kind of the hub for information for other schools in the area and other 5K runs also, kind of a mentor for other coalitions and schools, particularly with an event we have called The Truth About Baping, and an event called Addiction, What You Need to Know and What You Can Do, that we do along with Trinity Health as part of the Community Health Needs Assessment. So events like that and having this foundation are really meaningful to our work.
Karen, we are so blessed to have you and your organization in our community. We truly are. Everything you do, especially, I mean, we can point out the 5K, but again, I always go back to the story of the Narcan, in your space and the things you do behind the scenes for the community, we are so fortunate. So again, I wish we could have a 20-year, but we'll keep on doing a three. That way, we can see you and, you know, keep up the good work. If there's anything more we can do, you know, I know I can speak for all my colleagues that you just reach out.
Well, thank you. I appreciate being part of this team. It's a great village.
It is. We got a good village. Vice President?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo everything that Mr. President just said. Love working with Livonia Save Our Youth. We've worked together in the schools and had a great time with that. I actually had a really quick question on this. It says the lease was $493.15 with a 3% escalator, but now it says the new rental rate should be $453.77, and it was supposed to be the same. So I just had some questions I wanted to address on that.
Yeah, that might be some clarification. Maybe we throw this on the regular and get some answers on it.
That's what I'd like to offer this as for the regular, and see if we could, in the meantime, from the Law Department, get some answers on the discrepancy on the rental rates here.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. You're on the regular, but your matter is all but approved. We just want to make sure we've got the numbers right.
I understand.
So if you want to hang out with us, you're more than welcome to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Great to see you.
Thanks.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number nine, which is an acceptance of donation. This comes to us from the Department of Law from the Ford Motor Company to be used for the purpose as designated by the donor. Do I have someone to speak on it?
Hello, good evening. Stephanie Frye, Government Affairs, Ford Motor Company, Dearborn resident, but proud daughter of Livonia. Just wanted to say, in October 2022, Eagle filed a notice claiming Ford violated its consent decree, existing consent decree with Eagle in Livonia. While Ford does not believe it has violated its agreement, rather than go to court, a settlement was recently reached where no decision was made that either side was correct. The funds are part of that settlement and meant to assist the public schools and the community, of which we have been a long part, member of.
Thank you so much. Thanks for hanging out with us tonight. Counsel, Mr. Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you, Stephanie, who is a Franklin grad. Go Chargers. Thank you for being here and for the work that Ford does in our community. I'd like to offer an approving for consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
We have an approving for consent, and that's even better. You're a patriot. Good to know. There we go.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Seeing none. I think I can safely show six. I will go back to the audience. So do we have any last audience communication? Seeing none. Good night, Livonia.